That's an interesting move.
Does it move itself, or does it?
Yeah.
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 I'm monitoring it. It's on the screen. I think we've been in Nashville.
All you gotta do is cancel enough. You know, more people should get. More. Do you still do percentages, or is much easier with codes?
Yeah, I go to. I think it is a little bit.
Uh, it's, well, it's still here. So I started five years ago. My, my drop of all, this for sure, she is a, you know, for, can you think of any? Yes, sure. She's been on issue. Do we care if we're working better, better, better for our employees? And he said, we're working with codes, we can hear.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Code is also supposed to be part of the mission.
So, um. She needs to be changing.
So you go take great things? Bye-bye.
So I had a lot through the first year, a lot.
For a year, right?
Well, she's, she couldn't take the first year again.
This was the last one.
So I had a whole year. Not only did I have a whole year to catch up on, but I had to learn to. And what I've noticed with previous years, no one really, I looked at previous years, no one really. I don't wanna say pretty serious or understanding of stuff. Of doing the data work. So I took the time to learn, learn what games people were and all the deals in the world.
Yeah, it's a number of like, is that something that happened?
And there is a one for the prime, which is.
Maybe that's something.
Maybe it's something else.
It's a new requirement.
This is a new, this, oh, yeah.
I don't remember ever seeing.
Okay, so this is like a different, this is an active origin of the, of the, of the.
Yeah.
Their business.
Yeah, so he doesn't need to sign the keys, do?
Yeah, yeah, okay, it's something.
Well, he, does he need somebody like, good to witness it?
Yes.
And look at your seven twenty-nine.
I'll leave it at the K-11.
That's only.
Sorry to interrupt, Dan.
I remember, I was telling about three quarters.
It's, yeah.
Pause it.
So my first is.
It's important.
Oh, yeah, you have to know it.
But it's, it's, it's not, it serves a purpose. So I did a ton of research, I mean, I'm a computer guy, and I know it's just database entry. And the key thing, they use this data.
Yeah.
So I was talking to mine, I'm like, you ever seen the news, I think Cheese has a real, it says, you see the news? When they say all the CPRC is calling Beckman's lost fans as a virus.
Yeah.
You know how they know about that? It's in the FEMA, when we put in, I told Cheese, when you do this, you gotta get the model number and the serial. And they make it, we only get serial numbers, if you integrate, make your model. Because then I put that in, and then five hundred other guys across the country put it in, with a red flag, we got five hundred flyers. And I mean, we got that grant, um, we got that grant because, a lot of it's because our data, I think, was our data so clean.
Yeah.
You know, like, they would put it, turn it up, and first, first started, every time you went to neutral way, they put it in the standby. It's not, you respond, you responded to a structured fire. Your assignment was standby, but you responded to a structured fire.
Did they find the station?
Yeah, yeah, and then, you know, even like, you know, every gas, it just, because it smelled of gas, it's good. No, it's not, that's case. So, you know, I gotta, I do it, I compress it a little, and I kill myself when I need it. I gotta issue, I'm gonna do more routing here.
Just like the big grab one.
I haven't worn pants today.
Not since.
I don't wanna get yelled at by a clip again. Well, no, I got yelled at by a clip, because I wore a polo shirt.
Well, when you get paid. By clip. Mr. Lemon insisted on, uh, say, Jeff, every time.
I don't even think I have a sports shirt, I could.
With hell, I'd be back. Uh, bye. Sure. Uh, I haven't done a point yet.
Jack Stevens called him, said, we could do, a, a new project.
We're trying to send it for that.
Maybe we'll set it for the first week of July.
Yeah, I mean, no, we got it.
Yeah, everybody's can see it's happening.
Well, there's something to do.
I, I grabbed, they got two or seven dollars on the transfer here.
Yeah, I didn't use it.
Or, uh, so I had it.
First day, only years.
Let me go. Yes.
Mayor, I don't think it's gonna be here right now.
Ah.
Just, just, we, uh, we're in there.
So.
I don't know, we're gonna meet, we're gonna talk a little bit. What's a council meeting?
The word. We're playing a game for it.
I didn't show you some.
Would you assume? Everybody's staying, causing.
You're a slaver.
Everybody's staying, causing gridlock, had a, a present, and one called back every morning.
You know what?
Just nice, you know, right?
Just out there doing their job.
We got a good hit, uh, two weeks ago, like. What was that?
You tell me.
We, who's that? That was my daughter took the picture, my, on, on, oh, she posted that, right.
I laughed.
Oh, I do it all the time.
I laughed and I laughed, and I said, I gotta take a screenshot of that.
That's at all those, just the.
My girl's like, here mommy, let's take a picture. So she's like, here mommy, let's take a picture, and they said, you want, okay, great.
That is the. I said, that is the, I just, I know.
The best would be, we're down to the, down to the kicker field.
Or we'll be, uh, on your explode.
Great time in this, yes, great time in this. We bust it, we're waiting, we bust it, and it was, oh, we took a picture together. And it goes, okay, great, and. I sniffed it.
Yeah, I said, you too.
You're back. I said, so, I thought I was out, and they dragged me back in.
I knew you were gonna do that.
They sniffed behind me, and I moved after that, and they all know.
They went down there.
Oh, that's great picture, post it, post it.
And all the videos.
What was happening?
You don't think?
And then they turn, and then they look, and then turn it around, and I'm like, what are you doing? I love doing that.
Good question, do you ever follow the.
Uh, this is.
Yep.
Rookies right here.
Not for, for us, I think they left it out for.
Oh.
I think this is just something.
Joe, we don't have a card for you.
Just put me where you want, where you want.
You're right next to me.
Or do I stand, say I'm sworn in?
Technically, I have. Thanks. Of course, I haven't been sworn in for this year either.
If Joe's getting sworn in, should we do it? Should I sit, tell us?
I'll tell you, I'll tell you why. If any public comes, the answer's no. If there's no public here, sit down, Joe.
Okay. There you go, Joe. Okay.
Oh, Joe.
Yes, sir.
Saw my answer on that thing?
I did see, I, it's pretty much what I told him.
I figured.
But I figured, you know what? Since, you know, you're the legal authority, I said, send him an email, and you pretty much told him the same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't know if he'd talk to you first or not, but.
Oh, he did.
And Mark. I, I don't care if it's an inch.
Yeah.
Monica.
Yeah, I've been there, why?
Go through the little atrium they created?
No, I saw the picture on Facebook.
Nice. It's like, it looks like it's the little. It's just to keep the cold air out, you know?
Last time I was there, he told me this.
Joyce.
Yeah.
I'm like, oh God, it's like the little.
Your position, your position is forward.
So good, we had a potato.
Is that an annual appointment? Has it been made? Now, just the, the Tony is actually, current, currently, on the board. Where's the?
What happens?
Apparently not.
Oh, okay, then it's.
Yeah, I mean, he could marry us, but.
Yeah, then it would be you.
You know what? I had a, I had a very. Heck with my jacket. Although it's a ring.
Peculiar when you think about it. I'm not, I'm not taking it from you, but.
You see me like this?
So.
Because I refuse to wear whatever you, I say to most people.
Often, I actually have, but that was years ago, and this is now.
All right.
Thank you.
Sure. It's just the way it did happen all of a sudden, but.
If you haven't started.
No, I know that.
These are from the loo, the loo.
Res, so.
That's where I go to pick up.
Have you started? Start recording, so you haven't started recording? There's only someone. Yeah, down here, down below that. Can you move this up a little bit? If we haven't started, we'll, we'll, we'll start recording, and if you haven't stopped streaming, it's gonna be a little, stop streaming.
Will you take you out?
Start recording.
Will you take you out for that?
No. People say that's right, that's right.
Start recording. My idea, do that one first, and see if that.
Oh, my God. It's a better one.
Thank you, God. Good. Good.
Seen the clothes, good.
He was okay.
Go.
Six minutes delays for. Hey, Joyce, do you have that, the thing I was supposed to sign?
Who's that?
The meeting that I watched, I didn't see.
I didn't put it in your book.
Wow.
You got it.
It's on the clock. So I, I can vote if.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Okay.
It's good. Hi. Hi, Dell.
Hi, yeah, thank you.
Okay, Dell, yeah, we can.
Mr. Mark, can you give us a second?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can you state your name?
No, um, yeah, I'm. Probably. The calendar, I mean, the regular meeting schedule.
You know what? One belongs to me now. It's on my own.
Thank you.
I gave them two months in a row, and I think you missed the one, so you got two.
I got, well, I had one baby's thing.
Yeah, I think he did.
All righty. This is a regularly, regularly scheduled meeting, for which the date, time, and location is set in the annual notice of meetings adopted by the Waldorf Planning Board at the reorganization meeting of January two, twenty-two. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, and annual, and said annual notice has been filed with the borough clerk, a copy posted in the vestibule of the Waldorf Administration Building, and copies transmitted within seven days after adoption to the official newspapers of the borough, as designated by the governing body, to it, the Bergen Record and the Ridgewood News. Madam Secretary, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Walsh.
President.
Mr. Ramondo.
President.
Mayor Giadano. Mr. Schatz.
Here.
Mr. Orvitz.
Present.
Mr. Basilico.
Present.
Mr. Misselwick.
Here.
Mr. Wagnon.
Here.
Ms. Bedlenti.
Here.
Mr. Kowalski.
Here.
Mr. Verfort.
Here.
If we could all stand, have a moment of silence for her. All right, before we can even call for any new or old business, we must reorganize. So we have reappointed board members, and. Class three. Class two. Class four. Class four. All right. Ultimate one. All right. So we will go in semi-order. All right, what we're gonna do is, we are gonna do the classes together. So, Mr. Schatz, if you would stand, please. This is the official public, public office, State of New Jersey County of Bergen, if you would be happy to meet. I, Paul Schatz.
I, Paul Schatz.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully.
Impartially and justly.
Impartially and justly.
Perform all of the duties as a class-three member.
Perform all the duties of the class-three member.
Of the planning board of the Borough of Walbrook, Bergen County.
Of the planning board of Borough Waldorf, Bergen County.
For a one-year term, commencing January one, twenty-twenty-three, to December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-three.
Okay, for a one-year term from January one, twenty-twenty-three, to January, to December thirty-first, uh, twenty-twenty-three.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability, my ability.
And that I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To saying.
The same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
In this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
If you would be so kind as to sign this, you would look that up. All right, Mr. Orvitz, you're next. And, yeah. Oh, Paul, Basilico, you're up too. All righty. You are the two.
Yay, yay, we don't need any injuries to.
I, I know this is an exciting thing, but. All right, and you'll insert your names as appropriate. State of New Jersey, County of Bergen. I, state your name.
I, Joseph Orvitz.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all of the duties.
Form all of the duties.
As a class-four member of the planning board of the Borough of Walbrook.
As a class-four member of the planning board of the Borough of Walbrook.
Bergen County.
Bergen County.
For a four-year term.
For a four-year term.
Commencing January first, twenty-twenty-three, to December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six.
Commencing January first, twenty-twenty-three, to December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to saying.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to saying.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States and in this state.
In the United States and this state.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Gentlemen, welcome.
Welcome back. Paul.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
All right, we're almost getting there. Um. Joe.
Yes. Oh, that's.
Sorry.
Okay. We're gonna have to do Joe A and Joe.
Oh, God, we're gonna have to go through this again.
Got two Joes, got two walls.
We get creative, really? All right. Joe, if you'd raise your right hand, please. State of New Jersey, County of Bergen. I, Joseph Misselwick.
I, Joseph Misselwick.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
Faithfully.
Impartially and justly.
Impartially and justly.
Perform all of the duties.
Perform all the duties.
As a class-two member of the Walbrook, of the planning board.
As a class-two member of the planning board.
For the Borough of Walbrook.
For the Borough of Walbrook.
Bergen County.
Bergen County.
For a one-year term.
For a one-year term.
Commencing January first, twenty-twenty-three.
Commencing January first, twenty-twenty-three.
To December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three.
December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the saying.
To the saying.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States and in this state.
In the United States and in this state.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Needless to say, you guys turn these into.
Joyce.
Stan. All right. State of New Jersey, Bergen County, I, Stan Kowalski.
I, Stan Kowalski.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
Perform all of the duties.
Perform all of the duties.
As alternate number-one member of the Wal, of the planning board.
As alternate number-one member of the planning board.
For the Borough of Walbrook.
Borough of Walbrook.
Bergen County. For a two-year term.
For a two-year term.
Commencing January first, twenty-twenty-three.
Commencing January first, twenty-twenty-three.
To December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four.
December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to saying.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to saying.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Welcome back. Good to see everybody. All right.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
What are the different classes? I don't understand.
The different classes are, well, some of them have to do with public officials. Paul is technically the liaison for the Borough Council, and that's why it's a one-year term. Joe is a, an employee of the Borough, engaged in this type of work, and that's why his is a one-year term. Then it becomes a question of classes having different terms to stagger the endings, so that, as a practical matter, we don't wind up with everybody vacating the board at once.
I was two.
I lose track.
There are one, I'm two, he's three. I mean, no, he's two, I'm three, he's two, and I'm three. Yeah. He's two, and I'm three.
Have you advanced some classes? You have to take a class?
No. No, and you don't even have to have a class, in fact.
Classes.
Yeah.
It's just a, based on an open.
Basically, it's based on an open, and the mayor appoints based on the ones he has.
Okay.
And ultimately.
So it's just to stagger the times?
Yeah, exactly. That's really all there is to it, other than the, other than the, um, employees and liaison positions. All right. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, we have a couple of pieces of, um, business. The very first one is, the floor will entertain nominations for chairman of the Waldorf Planning Board. And I'll shout at once.
I've made a motion, Frank Walsh.
All righty, second. All right. And, Madam Secretary, if you'd call for a vote, please.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Ramondo?
Yep.
Mr. Schatz?
Yes.
Mr. Orvitz?
Yes.
Mr. Basilico?
Yes.
Mr. Misselwick?
Yes.
Mr. Wagnon?
Yes.
Ms. Bedlenti?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mr. Verfort?
Yes.
Okay, congratulations, Mr. Chairman. Who knew you were that popular? It seemed to drag a little. Second thoughts, buyers were lost. Would you like to take your proper place, sir? Are you got this? So this is mine.
I'm following you.
Okay.
Stan, come to the room now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Stan. Come on down. Next item up is the nomination of vice chairman. Mark Ramondo is the current vice chairman. Uh, nomination by Dan, second by Joe Misselwick. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. There, Mark. Appointments of the board secretary, is this just a straight, uh, we have to vote on it, or?
Yeah.
We do, okay.
Yeah, you do.
Okay. Appointments of board secretary are, current board secretary is, Joyce, everybody, if I can have a motion and a second on that. Motion by Adele, second by Joe Orvitz, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we're in. Board engineer, board engineer is Boswell Engineering, motion to have Boswell Engineering. Motion by Stan, second by. Motion by Stan, second by Adele, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Board planner, planner is Phillips, Kriegel, Priest, and all the rest of them. Uh, motion to accept, uh, motion by Dan, second by Mark. I'm sure it's Joe Orvitz, that was. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Board attorney, board attorney is Cliff Singer. A motion to accept, Cliff, motion by Joe Misliewicz, second by Paul Basilico, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, what do we do?
Formal vote on the whole slate.
Formal vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I heard that. But first, let's get.
You wanna do the formal vote on?
Let's get a formal vote.
Okay. So, uh, then we need a motion on that, motion?
Motion for a vote.
Motion for a vote, motion by Adele, second by Joe Orvitz. Secretary, please call the rule.
This for the whole slate?
This is for the slate, yes, I'm sorry. This is for the entire slate.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Ramondo?
Yes.
Mr. Schatz?
Yes.
Mr. Orvitz?
Yes.
Mr. Basilico?
Yes.
Mr. Misliewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Wagnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bellemonte?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
And Mr. Verborg?
Yes.
Okay.
Later I will tell you why we have this one.
I believe. Somebody needs to know. Uh, swearing in of the board attorney.
Do you have an oath?
Uh, just one of, we handed in. Was it, yeah, you had?
I didn't see it.
Was nothing in that folder?
Nope. This is the Boswell.
This is the Boswells.
However, here's what you do.
Just change the words.
All right, so read these words, we'll, we'll write them later.
You're the door.
Official oath of public office, Borough of Waldwick, Bergen County, uh, state your name, I.
Clifford Singer.
Clifford Singer, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully.
Impartially and justly perform.
Impartially and justly perform.
All the duties as board, uh, attorney.
All the duties as board attorney.
For the Borough of Waldwick, Bergen County.
For the Borough of Waldwick, Bergen County.
For a one-year term.
For a one-year term.
Commencing January first, twenty twenty three to December thirty first, twenty twenty three.
Commencing January first, twenty twenty three to December thirty first, twenty twenty three.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear full, uh, will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to same.
And to governments established in the United States and in this state.
And to governments established in the United States and in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God. You don't have to sign.
We don't have one for you to sign, but.
We'll do it next time. It's just me.
Just me?
Just me.
Okay. Now, we're at the point of the meeting, greetings to the public. Seeing no public, we will skip the greetings to the public. We'll have to do that, but.
We can.
Approval of the minutes of December nineteenth, maybe not, uh. That was, this was December nineteenth?
Yep.
Yep.
That was the word session?
Extra session.
All right. Motion by Dan, second by Mark, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have no resolutions. We have no applications. Old business, anybody have any old business to bring up? Nothing?
Just up, Frank?
Yes.
I think we had a conversation last night about how many places people go to to see how they run the Blackwater Business. Uh, and they're starting to, uh, and one of the websites is, uh, shows you how to buy a credit.
Right.
You know, I think it's always about the fact that some people. Not come back in front of the board.
Yeah.
Like, uh, Tanner, a few others. Just, some people don't, they don't have access to some of them. They, unless they're misassumptions, bypasses, or something.
I don't think it's a question of bypassing, I think it's a question of ignorance. Because what usually happens is when, um, normal checks on their businesses are around, whether it's Frank, Fire, or Joe. They mentioned, by the way, you realize that you have to go before the planning board, is that how it's usually done?
It's, uh, correct, and, uh, I don't know if the chamber can, you know, do something in their letter or newsletter or whatever communications that they have, but any business that basically comes into Waldwick or even relocates within, uh, from one address to another address within Waldwick, they do have to come in front of the planning board for site tenant review. And there are certain cases where there are modifications, you know, somebody leases a space, they want a sublet, then that ultimately sublet then also has to come in front of the planning board.
Is this information, we can ask the, uh, Borough Administrator to, or post on the, uh, website, the town website somewhere?
We can.
That, uh.
So we'll, we'll reach out to attorneys who want to sit here.
Well, they, look, I don't think we have to reach out first to the, you know, they have.
Those are the address.
Yeah, those are the address. And, you know, whether it's the P D or whoever, they all know.
The, uh. Where's the real first one? I don't know.
I think the real. I think that. That either both the, um, the chamber and the Borough simply have a note that new businesses coming in, um, need to check on the need for a, um, planning board resolution. And the reason I say check is because if they come in and buy the property, we don't have authority, you know, for a, um, tenant review. Unless they have two separate entities, which is very common. But rather than putting that minutia into the notice, just check with the board to see if, see if a, an appearance is necessary.
Contact, or something, something on the website. Miss one. This would be good.
I'll reach out to, uh, Borough Administrator and see if there's something he can do on that. We also had this.
Bombay, at their new place.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, have blinking lights? Do we have Bombay?
Uh, no, we do not, they can have it on, the L E D lights, but they can't blink, I could look into that.
Um, another question, it's been months since the, uh, store at Nanja and Giant Market.
Mm-hmm.
Their inventory section?
Mm-hmm.
People are still aren't.
They're not done with the project.
Shoddy.
All they.
They're a bit more shoddy for the looking.
That was, I, I'd spoken to them about two, three weeks ago, they fixed it. When was the last time you were there?
They put out a new paper. They put up a little paper with blue tape. It was a little ugly. Can we require them to put up something other than craft paper? Like, it's gonna be long-term.
I don't know.
No, we actually asked them, look, we have asked the businesses for craft paper.
You're getting newspaper.
They're doing exactly what they're, well, yes.
Yeah.
I mean, they don't really have time, I don't think in the resolution, there's a timeframe, how long they have to, we.
They're, they're, they're still.
They're active.
They have a permit, the permit has not been closed out, so right now, it's still status quo.
Nor has their, um, approval lapsed, so as long as they.
And how long does a permit?
The owner was in yesterday requesting, uh, his framing and sponsorship.
Okay.
And I said, you do, you do, so. But that's just one step in the process.
They, there is no given timeframe for them to complete a project. As long as the project is an ongoing project, I don't have the power to force them to finish it up.
And sweeten the foot accounts.
As a practical matter, if you're a small business and you're doing an expansion or whatever, very often, you're getting the money in pieces and not getting it all at once. Especially because finance rates are going up. So, I think that we try to be business friendly, if we can, we kind of bend over a little bit. Do these guys who come in, do you want to be here?
Absolutely, it just seems like it's enough. And it just doesn't look.
You know what?
In a scheme of life, is that really so important?
It's not, it's just a comment.
Okay.
And I've commented twice about it.
And.
So that's how long it's been there.
And other people are from up to me.
It's not a problem.
No, it's just, when, when Stan told me about it, I went to following day, they replaced the shoddy paper with new paper, but, you know, I can't tell them what color tape to use and whatever, I think that's being a little, you know, out of hand.
They're using the blue tape because obviously they're painting this, and that's what they had. We used, look. I did, for order tour, I did four years of college theater, and tech director of the theater had a saying, that is repeated in my house very often, and that is, if they're looking at that, the show's in trouble anyway.
Okay. Any other old business? Nothing? New business, we, uh, all the members have received a copy of the schedule of meetings for, uh, twenty twenty three. And we just want to point out that, uh, our meetings are typically the first Wednesday of the month. Uh, we moved the July meeting to the second Wednesday of the month, since July fourth was the day before our meeting. Cause issues with people. So other, other than that, if I could have a motion to accept the, uh, meeting schedule as printed, motion by Adele, second by Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Frank, can I just ask a quick question about that? Does that mean that we're not having executive meetings at all, or we're gonna cancel on them every time?
If we have some, well, what happens is, if we schedule the meetings, uh, then we have to go and pay to have them.
Right.
Unscheduled, so it's easier to do it the other way around.
So, will we, will we just, we, we don't, we'll be still planning on them, but we'll just be notified that they're not gonna happen by, by choice, right?
No. We're not, we're not having.
As a practical matter.
There was at least an extra one.
I think I had three of them, so I might have another one. I think I have another one.
With regard to the work section? It would be a good idea if you could possibly leave your calendar open.
Here you go.
For the fourth Monday of every month. Because that's the day we will schedule.
I only, I only had three, so.
I usually rely on your reminder, Monday, we have meetings.
I see. So.
You watch? Uh, yes, you, you would sign the same as if you were listening to the C D. Have you ever listened to the C D and passed and signed it? Joyce has a affidavit that you sign off, it says, I, I have viewed this.
And then I can vote.
Yeah, and I, and it's fired. And that's, that's your, uh, your oath.
Yes.
You're not swearing to Cliff or anybody.
Cliff, quick, quick question on that, on that situation. I know that, I, Frank, you mentioned this one last time, like, when I, I watched it on YouTube. I had an issue. Um, you, we've done this on a council where a council member's called in and listened on the phone as well and was able to vote as well. We don't, we can't do that here?
It seems counterintuitive, um, especially since our votes. The votes that happen at this table. When an application, they're really straw votes. Because they're simply votes to create a resolution. And therefore. I think we're going to create more encumbrance than otherwise, um, with phone men.
I only, I only mentioned it because in that particular instance, I was asked, get on, watch, and watch. Because, uh, uh, and we were down to, I think.
We're short.
Yeah, so I was asked to do that, and I wasn't able to vote because I was, you know, but I, I did get, um, work, get, get on, and I did ask, you know, Frank, and, and they, they said, no, you can't do that. So I was just wondering if it, we, I know we've done it on the council before, for the same reason, where we run into a, a problem, if, if it's gonna be a no.
The problem is that we're still in a gray area as to whether being there online is being that. You know, purposes, of purposes of a forum, it's not.
Mm-hmm.
So, I would, I would very much rather not invite that kind of a challenge.
All right, well, I just say, uh, uh, can we, you're saying, we technically probably could do it, but we don't wanna do it, we shouldn't do it. But I'm just saying, if we end up having a court, you don't have a.
I spoke with the Borough Administrator about this, since you had raised a question. He, he said that, uh, yes, the Borough Council does allow, he said, he's actually participated as a caller.
Yes, he has.
He found, have a vote, just a participation. Uh, and he, he said that it's up to the board attorney, you know, based on what you do as a board, sort of things.
Okay. And I, just, just in, in, in case of an, an emergency type situation, which is what we, we had done, and I had made sure I called in so that I, I could write, I could sign off on the form.
There, I'll be honest with you. My predation is at least to vote. Number one, at some point, somebody's gonna challenge that method of participation reports. And while I love making extra money by litigating, don't, don't get me wrong, that's what I started my career doing. I'd rather not it be us.
Aye.
The other thing is, and I'm not infuding anyone. But. When you have this option for emergencies. There is a tendency for emergencies to become less and less actual emergencies, and more and more of. Grain is an emergency. Yeah. And ultimately, we're serving the people, as we say. And if we're serving the people, don't we kind of have an obligation to be in front of them? That's the way I look at it. But, that we've said, if the board feels strongly that it wants to do this, I am not gonna tell them it's not legal.
Could it be if just, if we all have a phone?
We've come close.
We came awfully close to one time.
I don't know if you remember years ago, about ten years ago, we were short.
I forget. I do, I do vaguely remember that. And. I think we were on a wing and a prayer with that moment.
Somebody challenged.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. My, my feeling is, let somebody else break ground, let somebody else make law. But, you are the board. And if those companies vote for you. If we are, if it's a difference between a forum or not at the phone, then yeah, get the phones on. But first ask if the person can come down.
Further comments?[1639.92]
You want you to, to, to me?
Second by me. Second by Mark, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Second by me.
Motion carries. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Happy New Year, and welcome back, everyone.
Yes. Here for another year.
One year, the mayor decided not to see a one, and the board.
For the road, yeah? No, I was not for that. Gentlemen?
Congratulations. Congratulations on your re.
Very fortunate on my part.
Yeah.
And I apologize if you lack the.
But they held it against you.
Did they recognize your work?
Really?
Repromented by Tom, by nice speech. And if I got to say thank you.
This is our flunk to give away.
Yeah.